With our public participation. All right, we would also like to let the record reflect that we do have trustee, Vice President Norrisis. He did join us at about six twenty-eight. Okay, for our public participation, we do have two gentlemen who are signed up to speak. You will have a three-minute timeframe to speak on our public participation and we will go ahead and start with Mr. Julius Neal.
Okay, Mr. Neal, before you get started, let him turn on your mic.
Ready to go? All right, just wanted to touch upon a couple of things, especially with the dress code. And not just the dress code, just some of the negativity around the dress code. As a military person, as a put-off graduate myself, as a manager in a put-off refinery that likes to hire a lot of put-off kids, I think there's too much negativity around the dress code. Dress code is okay. What we have to do is when we enforce these kind of rules, give it a little time to kind of sink in, right? Can't just throw rules, put rules in place and not give it time to kind of mature. And for our sake, just seeing the things that we've seen online, not saying that they're true. I'm just saying it brings a negative attention from our communities around us, from the people we work with on our school district. I know myself, I can put my kids in any school district, but I picked P I S D. So what that means to me is when I'm interviewing the kids that you guys teach, I'm one of the only African-American, excuse me, African-American interviewers. And what does that mean? Does that mean our kids are getting looked over? Not necessarily. I think what it means is I feel comfortable interviewing different types of kids, right? Especially the ones that come from P I S D. So, one thing I want to talk about is we're going to have a lot of parents that respond to a lot of things that you all put in place. I just ask that as a community, as the leadership for our school, we don't go back and forth with parents online. I did see in one instance, a parent from Port Neches complaining about the same thing because everybody had to deal with it, right? But the result was a little bit different. They didn't have anybody from the school district, whether it's teachers, administrators, anything, kind of responding to parents when they put things online. So I just ask that regardless of what some of the parents of put-off this complaining about online, let's try our best as administrators not to respond to it because all it's going to do is spiral and go the wrong way. So that's, that's all I ask. And I like the rules, I follow the rules at my job, I follow the rules in the Army, but it's a way to do it too. Our, our kids shouldn't feel like they're in the Army. I know what the Army feel like. And what you guys are doing on daily basis is not the military. I appreciate the, the standards and the discipline because they need it. But we have some seniors in here, they're going to speak. I don't think a senior in high school should be treated like a night graduate in high school. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you so much for that public participation, Mr. Neal. We definitely appreciate that feedback. We will go ahead and move forward to our other public participation gentleman, Mr. Jeremiah Roberts. You also have the same three minutes. I'll start the time and I'll let you know when he gets to like one, just in case.
How y'all doing? Jeremiah Roberts, I just want to reiterate kind of what Julius said, mostly on the social media. Some type of conduct, something need to be put in place for people that work in the district to not bring so much, so many negative things on social media. Me truly, I feel like the employees are creating a void, creating a line between parents and teachers, admin, board members or whatever. We can't continue to keep doing it. I feel like we embarrass ourselves all the time. I truly feel that people laugh at us from the things they see that's coming from us online. I saw personally, I know I may joke online, but I see teachers, I see admin, I see board members. I feel like it's bullying that you guys bully parents at times. I mean, that's disrespectful. I know the parents do a lot of things, but they not the professionals. You guys are, we are. We the educated people, so I feel like sometimes we supposed to act at a higher education than most folks does. If we expect to come at, expect these kids to be in the classroom and respect us, and I see people jump online and say, oh, these kids disrespectful. What do you expect when they jump online and they see you disrespecting their mom or dad? I expect my son to look at you or my daughter to look at you a certain way if you disrespecting them, just like I will. Nobody has came at me, I feel like, but I still feel like it's disrespectful. And that's the only way, I think we have to start there to get better. That something needs to be put in place, Dr. Porterie, with the social media. Because I think it's getting too out of hand. Also, if a person don't wear a red shirt to the game, if a person choose to not go to some, you know, any sports event, we can't beat those people down. If we stick together, we can come together and we can continue to grow. But we ain't growing right now. We losing, you know, losing big time. Like he said, I'm from this district as well, I'm from Port Arthur. I don't like to harbor in the past, I don't know Lincoln, TJ, or Stephen F. Austin, or anything we had. But we also looked like we was a family. We don't look like that no more. We shouldn't be ganging up on each other. So that's pretty much all I have to say, that we need to get better. You know, some of y'all might take it personal, some of y'all may be mad. I truly don't care. You know, I'm an adult, just like you guys. I'm a parent in the school district. My kids will always go here. They wasn't here at first, my son wasn't in this district at first. We came to Port Arthur from Sabine Pass to here. I never compare schools, compare districts because I represent Port Arthur. I love Port Arthur, I love the school district. I don't speak on a lot of negative stuff within the district from online, but I definitely have a lot. So, I just wanted it online to let you guys know, I think we need to get better. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts, for that public participation as well. We definitely also appreciate you coming in. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm just thankful and glad to see you guys here, period, to express your concerns as well as, you know, everyone who here, who's here to hear that or see what you guys have to say. So that, that means a lot to me personally and we definitely appreciate y'all coming in to give us that information. That's all we had on the agenda for the public participation section. We will now move on to staff reports by Dr. Mark Porterie.
Before, can I have a moment before we move to staff reports?
Yes, sir, trustee.
I'd like to thank the parents and the actual students that showed up. To me, that is just something that's very special because we actually showing, you're showing your kids actually the route of getting something done. I know a lot of people talking a lot of stuff on Facebook and say a lot of things, but the Facebook is not ways of getting business taken care of. This is the proper way and the proper elements to get your business taken care of by coming and standing in front of us, in front of the board and expressing your feelings. Although, we can't respond, but hearing from this desk makes a big difference than hearing it on Facebook. And I appreciate everybody that came here because it shows some type of respect. I understand, Mr. Roberts, I understand, Mr. Neal, I understand where you're coming from, I see it myself. I get beat up from it. And some of the decisions is not from me, but I get beat up and I take it to the big. But this is the proper way. And students that are here, who's standing up on behalf of yourselves, behalf of your family and your peers, I commend you because this is the route that you need to take. It's not always going on Facebook, talking smack, making noise, because that's not going to move a mountain. But what you did today by coming here, just your presence alone, is doing something that you don't see, but it's actually doing something. And I'd like to thank the parents for bringing your kids here and for you all showing up at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, President Johnson and board members. As we move forward with the staff reports, I would like to take a moment to just acknowledge the incident that happened in Minneapolis yesterday where two students were killed, seventeen injured. It's, it is not over and it will not ever be over. We had our meeting last Tuesday, our leadership meeting, and we discussed what we needed to do to ensure that every student, every staff member is safe within our school district. We understand that there are people out there that if they plan to do something, they're going to execute. But it is up to us to ensure that we do everything in our power to keep our staff and students safe. I cannot even imagine having to call a parent and tell a parent that their child is no longer with us. We understand that parents want to come into schools, we understand that they like open door. But that will, the way it happened before fifteen, thirty years ago, that will never be again. That gentleman shot through a window. We are happy that he did not, wasn't able to get inside the church where students were praying. So we understand every day, we have to think about, this may be the day, because you never know. So we're always constantly, we're never satisfied on how we put in, safety in place. Our students and our staff are number one when it comes to safety. And there are too many people out there that are angry for no reason and mental illness that we do not understand. So, we are blessed to have facilities that are enclosed. We don't have portable buildings anymore where students will walk in and out. A lot of great things that are occurring that has helped us. Dr. Getwood does a great job at making sure that we are safe and the drills that we are going to have to do every, every so often to ensure our students understand what to do and the vigilance that we must maintain. Dr. Getwood, do you have anything to add?
And the last thing, Dr. Porterie, you have expounded upon what we're doing and how we're doing it. And of course, safety and security, though, that has been heightened in the United States, in the state of Texas. And Governor Abbott and others have mandated certain drills and we're doing those drills. And I'd like to say that recently, we trained at least two hundred Kelly substitute teachers on safety and security protocols. So, we extending training to, of the mandates, to our faculties as well as our substitute teachers. And on September third, I believe, or fourth, which date is it, September second, we will deal with the adjunct teachers as well as the new employees to the district for the first time. So we're trying to ensure that we are able to be comfortable with the training and those persons who are trained. And we think that, God forbid, it's any kind of happens like that that happened in Minnesota. But we think that if we have dress rehearsals to events, practice before something actually, actually happens, we will fare better than if we go into a chaotic situation. So, I think that the Port Arthur Independent School District can do more, but we're doing a lot. So anytime you're dealing with safety and security, you can never be complacent.
Absolutely. And the last thing I will say on that, every day, we have to think about, just because it has not happened here, does not make it that it won't. So every day, safety and security must be on our minds. From the moment we wake up until we go to bed at night, our staff and our students are too important. And one staff member, one child, is too many. One. As we move forward, the first thirteen days of school have been really great. I think it's been good, it's, it's been, there've been some changes and I think everything is calming down. But our kids look great, our staff is wonderful and we're working really, really hard. There've been some challenges and some things that have happened that has caused us to make changes, even in transportation with our younger kids. We understand there's so many things happening now and our little, our little younger kids, our kindergarteners and our pre-K students who actually ride a bus, some of them ride the bus by themselves, some of them get off the bus by themselves and walk home. Ms. Jacobs, Assistant Superintendent of Operations, has talked with her team and they've put some things in place for our youngest of the Titans.
Yes, sir, thank you, Dr. Porterie, and good evening, everyone. So to just kind of expand upon what Dr. Porterie is referencing, yes, the school year is also a great start, but we have, we have found a few opportunities for learning as well as for improvement. And so with our pre-kinder and kindergarten students, we have implemented a district-wide mandate for backpack tags. This will not only help the, the bus drivers, but it'll also help the campus personnel who are aiding the students in getting on the buses and making sure they're on the correct bus to where they can be retrieved when they exit the bus. So in addition to that, we're also implementing forms and so we'll see that kind of rolling out across the district. But we're implementing forms where our parents will be able to identify four authorized persons who will meet their pre-kinder or kindergarten students at the bus stop for retrieval from the bus and that's with a photo ID. And so these two major changes will be documented in the student transportation manual and that will be updated to reflect the changes and related details. And we plan to put that before the board at your September board meeting. So again, with safety being a top priority of the district, we feel that it is, it is imperative that we do what we can on our side to ensure that our students have pleasant transportation, but also safe transportation and that parents and guardians feel the same as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we, as you've seen, board members, we have presented to you teachers and since January, we've been hiring and hiring certified teachers in our district and that is a great thing. So I definitely want to thank Dr. Seestrunk for her endeavors in getting all of the onboarding because that was an issue at one time, once we found them, getting them onboard, getting them into class, classrooms. Dr. Seestrunk, would you like to say anything on that?
No, I, I would just like to say that being the working very closely, that we do allow the teachers onboard the virtual career fair. Prove it's successful, it's your recommendation, Dr. Porterie. Found, we've been able to add more teachers, certified teachers into the classroom and we're looking to onboard more as we have more of our visa teachers come into the country as well. Because when we created the virtual career fair, that expanded our reach for being able to reach and obtain certified teachers. Thank you.
You all have done an excellent job.
Do we know how many vacancies, a roundabout figure that we have, open in the district?
And I'm going to tell you why. Because we don't place adjunct teachers, which are our degree teachers, but not yet certified teachers, in bilingual, pre-K or special education teaching positions. So we have to use a substitute in those positions until we can get an adjunct, a statement of eligibility. Meaning that, that adjunct teacher is in a certification program and once they complete so many modules and pass one of the two or three required tests, depending on what you're being certified in, they have to remain adjunct and then they can get a statement of eligibility and then we can give them a contract. And we're transitioning those adjunct teachers as we speak. They're matriculating through those certification programs and just as soon as they meet those requirements, we move them over to a certified teacher contract.
As we talk about instruction, our teachers and our students are doing a magnificent job right now delivering the instruction. We have to keep the momentum moving, we have to keep our students engaged. One important thing, and as the board and I talked about earlier, Memorial High School and Wilson Early College, the focal point, and since our seniors are here, we need help. We need for Memorial High nine through twelve to own it. And the reason being, we appreciate Wilson, we appreciate the students that attend Wilson. Those students earn sixty credit hours. So it's difficult for Memorial nine, twelve to have students that will become a valedictorian or a top ten. It's one number. What, where we're headed, if we do well this year, is to separate Memorial nine through twelve and the Wilson Early College. We're hoping that in 2027, we would have two graduations. One graduation for Wilson with a valedictorian, a salutatorian and a top ten, and another graduation for Memorial High nine through twelve with its own valedictorian, its own salutatorian, its own top ten. However, in order to do that, Memorial nine, ten must carry itself academically. It has to, there's no other choice, it has to do that. And it can, if you own it and you work it, it can happen. The instruction is there, we have brilliance, we have great kids, smart kids. We just have to calm down, learn, and what you learn, and I'll say this, we teach all year. And it's not everyone, but we look across and we have kids that on a writing test, they put IDK. You can't grade an IDK. And I'll say this, as vocal as our children are when we're talking to them, when we tell them something, as often as we have conversations when we're, I'm going to say, conversing back and forth when you want to do something and we don't want you to, I can't even imagine you not being able to transfer from your mind to the paper in writing what you would tell us verbally for thirty minutes, if you just try. And that's all we're asking, but we want Memorial nine through twelve to be independent. This year will be the goal, this will be the goal, and next year, if everything works out, we will move in that direction. Now, for instruction, Dr. Owens.
Thank you. Good evening and greetings, board members, superintendent, staff. As a curriculum instruction assessment department, we have been hard at work since this past summer and have continued hitting the ground running since August first. Our team remains fully engaged in supporting teachers and students, ensuring that they have the resources and guidance needed to succeed. As I speak to you, you will see a few pictures highlighting the impactful work happening in classrooms and with teachers, all led by our dedicated team. Our curriculum and instruction highlights include the rollout of the updated curriculum, innovative professional development, emphasizing vertical alignment and inspiring literacy initiatives, led in partnership with Lamar University professors for our kindergarten and first grade teachers. In addition, our district celebrated significant achievements through the Teacher incentive lawman program, awarding over four hundred seventy-five thousand to teachers for their excellence and dedication. One campus also received additional funds for paraprofessionals and certified staff through redistribution, ensuring more educators were recognized and supported for their contributions. Our back-to-school activities kicked off by welcoming our new teachers to the district. We held a three-day training where teachers were equipped with curriculum expectations, instructional software, lesson planning strategies and other essential tools needed to be successful in the classroom. From there, we welcomed all our district teachers with the curriculum and technology conference and professional learning days. We provided engaging collaborative opportunity for staff across all departments, including special, special education, bilingual migrant technology and more, and so on and so on. So since the first day of school, we have hit the ground running, visiting classrooms, checking on teachers, ensuring, ensuring students are learning and we're participating in PLCs, we're providing support, we're planning meetings, attending data meetings hosted by Dr. Poppyon. I'm sure she will give you an update on her efforts, as I want to, you know, take away from her update. During the second week of school, in collaboration with the HR department, we welcomed back adjunct teachers and new teachers for our new teacher and adjunct academy. The academy's objective is to provide additional hands-on support, including classroom management strategies and curriculum instruction, unpacking the teacs, et cetera. These weekly clinics will continue until the spring and are led by curriculum supervisors and high-performing teachers. And even one of our board members, as a matter of fact, even visited the district after, after hours. And he went, was able to witness, you know, firsthand how we are building teacher capacity after hours. So that was good to see that, he could see the, how hard we're working on building our teachers. And then to conclude, these initiatives reflect a deeply committed to investing in both educators and students. Our team's tireless efforts ensure that every classroom is not only a place of learning, but also a place of inspiration, collaboration and growth. A true testament to the dedication, passion and excellence of our educators. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from...
Any questions?
I have a question, I had to statement, but before, before I make my statement, just also want to clarify too for everyone who will watch this video later. I know we planned on separating the schools, but to come, to clarify that also those students at Wilson will still be able to participate at Memorial.
Yes, at Wilson Early College High School, for most of you, understand that most schools do not allow their students to participate in extracurricular activities. We in Port Arthur, that was our choice to allow extracurricular activities for our students because we didn't, we didn't feel that it was right not to. And there are several from Wilson that, that do participate.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure we added that point to clarify for the community that we're, they will be separate but still be the same because I understand, I was the first graduating class from the early college and of course, we all want to be a part of that, that high school. You know, with the making faces, anyway. I wanted to also say thank you to you as well, Dr. Owens and also of your team. I did get a chance to, to come in and see, and that was actually one of the things that I asked Dr. Porterie before and he also did tell me then, but it's nothing like being able to actually see the work versus hearing the work or reading the work. And it's very, very rarely that we get a chance from this perspective to actually go in and see. And to see you all coming in after hours, staying after hours, working with our adjunct teachers, really, really, really made a big imprint in my heart to know that we are at least offering the success to help you get there. Because that was my biggest, biggest concern with that was, okay, we're going to give you this pay, but how are we going to help you be successful in the classrooms that you're actually in for this moment? And making sure that we get you not just here, but to the finish line. So I want to say thank you for your commitment and it seemed to be very fun, I got a chance to sit in on a few of the courses. I learned some of the things and quite naturally, I felt like it was a class reunion for me because I've seen most of my classmates that are now adjunct teachers. So it was really good to see the work that you all are putting in. And specifically, because of how we are currently situated in the world today in education, we have to have that all-hands-on-deck method and it was really good to see administration and of course, those adjunct teachers working hand-in-hand to learn, to, to be better, to get what we have to get. Just wanted to say that, thank you.
Um, we have, we do follow the agenda. However, in order for anyone to speak on the agenda, there is a process in which you have to go through to sign up to do so. As the, uh, two gentlemen that did, you know, speak during the public participation moment, um, they were able to go down and put themselves down to be able to speak on the agenda. And that's able to be done all the way up until, I believe, twelve noon the day before of the meeting. Of the day of, I'm sorry, twelve noon. You have it until that time.
Ms. President, you're, you're not gonna be able to, um, have anyone speak at the meeting. It's, it's against the law. It would be a violation of the law. They would have to sign up, um, to do that.
Uh, this, this is, uh, our legal counsel, she's stating, she's stating that they would have to actually sign up to speak. It will be a violation of the law if we allowed you to do so otherwise. Um, and I do know, I just, I just wanna throw out there because someone did reach out to me. So I just wanna be clear, um, because I did advise a couple of students on the policy in which they needed to speak. I don't know exactly who I spoke to, but they did advise that the information was passed on. And I just kinda wanna share that, because I don't want anyone to think that we don't want anyone to speak. Because I did get several questions from students and I advised them on the direct process on how to, how to speak. So I'm not really sure why that wasn't communicated. Um, and I think some of our other trustees also shared that information with some, um, people that contacted them in reference to speak.
Madam Attorney, is, is there, are we able to suspend rubber rules of order? Okay, I'm just asking, is there any procedure that we could utilize to move forward? Or is? Even after we adjourn?
It's a meeting. And for, yeah, four people or more is a meeting. Let me, let me suggest that if we could, we would take the names down. And during our September meeting, they were already beyond the, on the agenda. We'll know they're coming. So we don't want, we're not saying no. But during the September meeting, if you would come back, and they would be able to participate during the public participation.
Come to, Madam President, uh, they're, they can come to the administration building, but this is a public meeting, um, held under law. So we can't, and just as a gentleman signed up for that, it, it has to be, it has to be on, on the agenda for that and sign up for, for public participation.
Let me just be clear. It, it is, is in this president role right now, I am definitely an advocate for our kids all the time. They know that I have a personal open-door policy. I talk to them all the time, which is why when the question was asked, the information was given. It's not that we, and I just wanna be clear on his statement, because I don't want anyone to think that we're turning our back on any of you. But legally, as being an elected official, if that, if our legal counsel is advising us that's against any type of law, I'm not breaking it for anyone, you know? So, and I don't think any of our board members would do so if there's open meetings and things. I mean, that's something you could probably take up with the governor, senate, senate or anything like that, but we can't change that on our level. So I want to be clear in saying it's definitely not us turning, or me for sure turning our back on you. You know, as I said, when I was asked, I gave the correct policy so that we can avoid this. But I don't want that to be any type of depiction put out that we're turning our back on you as students. Or I don't wanna hear what you have to say. But we do have, and as you grow and learn that, especially becoming an elected official, there are legal rules we have to abide by. And unfortunately, that's what our legal counsel is saying. I applaud you all for coming and definitely don't want you to think we don't wanna hear you. You know, you can always talk to any of us, you know, anyone can ask me anything personally. But to speak at the meeting, those are the procedures and it is the law. So we definitely don't want you to think that we don't wanna hear what you're saying.
And Madam President, nothing keeps, uh, nothing keeps, uh, you board members from visiting with the students. Nothing keeps that. But we cannot have, you know, outside of the agenda at an open meeting. You, you have a copy of the policy. Yes, sir?
Okay. Next, we have, um, on the agenda. Perfect, perfect. Great. During the, um, and also Dr. Papillon is one, she's working with us with our school leadership. Uh, she's, uh, with the tiniest titans. She works with Wheatley Early, uh, Childhood and a lot of other things. So Dr. Papillon.
Yes, sir. And, um, thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I would also like to say, if the students do, um, would like an audience with myself, they also can call my office and speak with me. I'm also willing to, um, listen and meet with the students as well. Okay, so, um, spent some time this week and last week working with our leaders, developing our leaders to be true, um, let's just say statisticians, right? So we have some work to do. And so right now, we are working to build capacity in all of our leaders. We are looking to build our pipeline so we can have the strongest of the strongest leading our campuses. And so as of now, from August twelfth, we have had a very strong and inspiring start to the school year. Our campuses are, they're demonstrating commitment. When you get a chance to visit, you'll see that they're caring for students. They're working to communicate with parents, um, and staff across the district. And so just wanna talk about a couple of things that our Office of School Leadership is doing. So right now, as Dr. Owens mentioned, we are conducting what we call Axiom visits. And so we have gone to all but four campuses where we're working with each campus, looking at what we have in front of us with regards to star data. So right now, our campuses are looking at our students and how they performed in twenty-three, twenty-four, compared to how they're, they performed in twenty-four, twenty-five. And so when we say Axiom, Axiom is actually a part of a platform that we have already for data, uh, student managed, data, student data management, Ediforia. So we're going into this platform. We're looking at our different domains. You know, our state accountability system has three different domains. Our first one is dealing with student achievement across all subjects, all grade levels. We also look at domain two, which is looking at student growth. As Dr. Porri has mentioned, we cannot go backwards. All of our campuses are expected to show growth of some sort for all of our students. And so what we're doing, we're going to the campuses, meeting with their entire leadership teams and working and focusing on student growth, looking at how our special education services are servicing all of our students, as well as our multilingual and migrant student populations. We're focusing and pushing our ELPs, which are our English language proficiency standards, ensuring that they are being implemented at tier-one instruction. So what we have noticed that we are lacking is just good, strong, tier-one instruction. And so that is what we're pushing on our campuses. We also will be doing another round of visits with our campuses so we can focus on closing the gaps. We have students on our campuses, African-American students, Hispanics, and there should not be a gap in performance. And so we're working on ensuring that we're doing everything that we can to address all student needs. Um, we did have, as Dr. Porter mentioned, our first leadership team meeting. And in our leadership team meeting, we had our principals, our supervisors, directors in the room where Dr. Porter reviewed our district improvement plan. We talked about how our district improvement plan, um, we talked about our strategic priorities. And we talked about all of the performance objectives and the strategies. But we talked about ensuring that our campuses are not continuing to keep in their campus improvement plans, low-level, low-value activities. And we're doing the same thing over and over and over again, and we're not getting the results that we need. So we're making sure that our campus improvement plans, as well as our targeted improvement plans for our campuses that are in school improvement, are aligned to our district improvement plan and ensuring their performance objectives are going to give them the biggest bang for their buck. We're ensuring that our objectives are smart, meaning that they're specific, they're measurable. We're making sure that our campuses are truly focusing on the goals that they set in front of themselves. We also reviewed, um, an article, which is an opportunity myth. And so what the opportunity myth is saying is that there are about four resources that we wanna make sure that our, uh, campuses are providing for our students. Four key resources, and that is access to grade-level instruction, strong instruction, grade-level appropriate assignments, as well as deep engagement and then high expectations for our students. That's four areas that we wanna make sure that we're focusing on with all of our campuses. Also, again, we talked about special programs. We talked about safety protocols, um, ensuring that all of our campuses are doing everything they can to keep our schools safe and secure. We will also continue our quality assurance walks. We talked to our, talked with our campuses about the visits that they will have unannounced. And we don't want our campuses to, uh, be prepared for when we show up. And meaning that we will show up on campuses expecting them to stay ready, so that they don't have to get ready. So just making sure that we're encouraging our campuses to do the right thing every day by students. Um, we're also providing special education some, um, training specifically for, uh, crisis prevention intervention, uh, which is CPI, as well as writing IEPs, which are individualized education plans. Um, and then just specific campus highlights, of course, we have Adams and Port Acres. They're excited about the CHAMPs program and other PBIS systems that they're looking to implement. And CHAMPs is a district, and also it's a discipline management plan where when our kid, when our students go from different areas, either in the classroom or between common areas in the, in the, um, in the campus, we wanna make sure students understand the expectations. And so we're just trying to put those things in place. Um, and then we also talk about Booker T. Washington, DeQuin, Sam Houston. They're bragging that they are fully staffed, so we're excited about that. Uh, Lakeview and Travis Elementary, they said that they had some traffic concerns, as well as Memorial, uh, ensuring that we, uh, do what we need to do to address those challenges. And they're pretty excited about the changes they've made. Um, Terrell Elementary is exciting. You know, they have a new principal this year that went back. Mr. Jimenez was at Adams, and now Mr. Jimenez is at Terrell. He has his assistant principal there with him. They are excited to roll out the Terrell way. So we're excited about things that are happening there. And then, of course, Wheatley Childhood Center, as we've said, yes, that is where learning begins, with the littlest of the littles. And so we're excited about that. Um, Abraham Lincoln Fine Arts Academy, they're excited about the cell phone policy. They said that the students are being very receptive to it. And so we're excited that that is increasing the instructional learning time with our students. Um, at TJ, they are forming cohorts of students that are moving about the campus so they can provide the best support. And then, uh, they also have the Ignite Pilot GT program that they're excited so that they can meet the needs of our, um, GT students. Memorial High School, of course, there is an academic focus. We were there today. She had all of her team in there. She had all from ninth through twelfth grade, all of the APs, instructional coaches. We were there discussing ways in which they can, um, address the needs of all of their students. Wilson, of course, they're connecting with their, um, their professors, um, providing the support that they need so we can make sure we, um, obtain those associate's degrees. CTE is excited about HVAC programs and the construction technology. Uh, PAC is even excited about the new dress code. They're excited. They said that, hey, campus rules, parental involvement is increasing. Don't wanna leave anyone out. And so basically, we are off to a very strong start. Um, we're excited about this year of growth. Um, we tell our, we have some students and we've pointed them out, students that didn't make any growth from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, and we said that's unacceptable. Students spend a hundred and eighty-plus days in a classroom and they are still where they were when they came in. So that is unacceptable. And our, uh, leadership teams understand that. It's also unacceptable for them to go backwards. So there is nowhere to go but forward. So we're excited for the year, um, looking forward to some great things to bring over the next few months. Thank you.
And that concludes our staff reports.
I just wanted to say, Doc, you did your big one. You did your big one. Dr. CP, you, you coming in strong. You coming in very, very strong. Everything I just heard you say, um, was really especially important for what your role is. It's really taking the data and disaggregating it and actually seeing what the weaknesses are and putting a proper plan in place to see, okay, this is how we're gonna go from here to there. It's just like a ladder. You know, you can't climb it if you don't have steps. And so what I'm hearing you say is that you all are implementing steps and, and actually using factual data to say, this is how we're gonna go from here to here by this time. So I really appreciate you saying that and also laying out the plan. And I also appreciate you as well, because it shows that in these first few weeks of school, that you've already gotten acclimated with each entire school by bringing an update from each school. That's a personal update. So that speaks to the work that you have been doing. So kudos to you, um, and, and your team as well. It really makes me excited about this year, um, especially in seeing actionable results, rather than just talking about what we wanna be, seeing some action behind our goals. So thank you for that.
When you finish, you go ahead.
Okay, just really quick, I wanna utter the same sentiment, sentiment as, uh, trustee Getwood. You know, I've talked to you all the time since day one. I was really excited about your energy and it's still there. And it still shows, um, we do get a lot of, um, feedback about the good things that you're doing. And I think that's great, because you know, of course, people say all the time, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing, the same way, but thinking you're gonna get a different result. So it definitely has to be something that's changed. And I think you are being a great change with our, uh, principals and all of our administrative staff that works with you. I like the energy, the ideas, and I just wanna tell you to keep that momentum, because we definitely need it to keep going and, you know, keep your foot on those nicks and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. So I definitely enjoy hearing your enthusiasm and everything, and, you know, in such a positive way. And I think that, as you said, the only way is, is for, if we continue with that.
I have a, I have a comment, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, I just wanna associate myself with the comments of the board members as well as superintendent. Superintendent earlier talked about how students can own the store mentality and do what they need to do to be more successful in school and in life in general. And I like the energy in the room, appreciative of the speakers for this evening. Appreciate that we followed the law, of course. But I've been on school board for two years, and this is the very first time we've had any speakers, uh, speak at, at the school board meeting. So I'm proud to see the speaker show up today. And again, and we have to follow the policies and the law, rules of the law. I had a pleasure recently of meeting, uh, one of the Brigadier Generals of the Army, uh, recently. A person named, a lady named Erby Lewis. She's like thirteenth or fourteenth in line to be President of the United States of America. African-American female, young, lawyer, trained, works as, as, uh, uh, as Brigadier General. And I was inspired by and appreciative of having the opportunity to meet her, partly because it was an example of what can happen, uh, in spite of the politics and all the reasons why people say you can't do something, or your background and so forth. This is a demonstration of excellence that I just so enjoy. I'm inspired by it. But as much as I was inspired by meeting her, I'm, again, inspired by the conversation this evening, by the staff and by the staff, superintendent, and board members about what we can do to be more successful. So thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. That will conclude our staff reports for the evening. We will go ahead, we will go on, I'm sorry, to, uh, the minutes, uh, considering if appropriate, approve the minutes of the July twenty-fourth. Oh, I'm sorry. Doc was trying to cut you out, Ms. Lott. He told me we was done with staff reports twice. Oh, yeah. I apologize, Ms. Lott. Can you give us our district updates?
So this covers July twenty-fifth through August twenty-eighth. Um, we have had very successful media campaigns. Our, uh, media team has put together some very popular promotional videos for our auxiliaries. Um, and we released them one at a time in the, uh, weeks leading up to our first football game. So we have, uh, one from the Flames, one from the Band, one from the Twirlers and the Flags. And up next are our cheerleaders and our volleyball team. Um, Dr. Murphy has become a media darling. The media has really been on, uh, the, focused on the high school. They've been all over Channel Six and Channel Twelve several times. And next week, she will be interviewing with, um, the Beaumont Enterprise. So we are informing the public of the changes at the, um, high school campus. As was mentioned, um, Dr. Crochet retired from Terrell Elementary as principal, uh, concluding thirty-one years as an educator. Lincoln welcomed a new assistant principal, and so did, uh, Adams Elementary. And we also welcomed a new administrator here at the, at, uh, central office. Um, Dr. Maya Turner is our new coordinator for assessment and instructional support. We had a very successful convocation on our Facebook timelines. And also our employee Facebook timelines were flooded with hundreds of selfies, dozens of posts and tags. And someone in the community said it looked like club convocation in PAISD. So PAISD is the best district and the place to work. So PAISD is the best district and the place to work and learn. We had some very successful days of professional development, as Dr. Owens mentioned earlier, from the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department. We also bid a happy retirement to Harvey Blankenship in the Operations Department. So here are some pictures from his retirement party that was held, the first party held across the street in our new Support Services Center. We also posted some important dates to remember out to the community, a list of our student holidays, some staff holidays, some staff professional development days where the students actually have holidays. We posted the start testing dates. And what's not shown on the slide, we also gave parents the calendar for when progress reports and report cards will be posted to the Home Access Center. Our first quarter first progress report is scheduled to be posted tomorrow after five P.M. On the right-hand side, this is some work from Thomas Jefferson's ELA students. They did autobiographical drawings, and those posters were in the hall outside that particular classroom. Here are some pictures from our different Meet the Teacher events across the, some of our schools. We had a very successful first day where parents sent in and also uploaded in the comments of our posts over two hundred photos of their kids in their first day of school outfits. And we have a new person at PAC who has taken over their social media moderation. So they have been posting, this is a picture of the staff, and you'll see another posting shortly that came from one of their classrooms. Our seniors celebrated their senior sunrise breakfast. Even though the weather was bad, they still were able to come out and have a good time in the practice gym of the high school. One of our teachers, Travis, applied for and was awarded a five-hundred-dollar grant for classroom materials from a local organization. Our staff of district social workers introduced themselves on social media and along with their names, contact information, and the campuses they, they cover. They also included in their post several slides of resources to help people in the community. Even if they can't reach a social worker, they had slides with resources and contact information of where to go to get different types of help in the community. At the bottom middle, our Wilson Early College freshmen have already made their first college tour visit. And if I'm not mistaken, that actually happened the first week of school. Thomas Jefferson educators traveled to New Orleans this summer. This article was featured in the newspaper in the past month. They presented during a regional conference on leadership strategies. And at the bottom right, one of the Thomas Jefferson teachers earned her master's degree over the summer. In May, we had a group of our students who participated, who participated throughout the summer for internships with the Port Arthur Economic Development Corporation. And this is their, not in May, this is their culmination activity at the end of the summer. So these, this is a group of our interns. And they may have had one student from a neighboring district to participate. Across the bottom, you'll see that the Ninth Grade Academy has been named and officially recognized by the Ocean Guardian Association as an ocean guardian school. And that's from NOAA's Office of National Marine Sanctuaries. So what the students have been doing, they've been recycling, they've been growing garden, gardening foods, fruits and vegetables, they've been cleaning up beaches, they've been building different types of new watering systems. So we're proud of that accomplishment to be recognized like that from NOAA. At the top right corner, Dr. Papillon mentioned the students at Wheatley. These tiny titans, this is the cutest thing, use Q-tips to make X-rays of their bodies. And then some of our eighth-grade students at TJ used the Jenga game, which is very popular, to apply scientific reasoning to show balance and unbalanced forces. This is some more pictures of learning taking place across the district, heavy on the science labs. We'll, we see some kids learning aviation in the bottom right corner with paper airplanes. In the bottom, in the middle, Sam Houston students, the teacher is making, taking notes more interesting by being creative with the note-taking. You can see it looks kind of like doodling, and if the kids, I don't know if they're still reading those Dork Diary books, but that was pretty popular in that series of books. In the middle, we have students and staff participating in our college T-shirt Thursdays. Dr. Papillon also mentioned we have a new construction teacher at the CTE campus. And so that's a picture of him engaging his students at the top left corner. And the top, bottom left corner, some of our students in the computer maintenance class are actually fixing broken Chromebooks. So the students are able to fix some of the issues that we're having with the Chromebooks to get them back in service and back into the hands of other students. Senate Bill Twelve, we just alerted parents about this, this week, where we have to have consent forms for parental consent before we can provide routine physical or mental health services. So simple things like going to the nurse, we have to have parent permission, unless it's a case of an emergency, that's not a parent permission, but routine nurse office visits, mental health services, and participation in student clubs. We sent the information in all calls, emails and text messages. It was very simple to click on the link, it didn't even take five minutes to give consent. And that's something that was Senate Bill Twelve, so something that the parents must complete. If they don't complete the forms, then it's considered refusal. So then the children won't be able to receive services from the nurse or mental health services or participate in clubs. We have a new teacher at our high school for theater arts, who is also an alumni of the school. And her students have already produced and filmed and posted a video, and it's very funny, but it's very informative, about theater rules. So as you can see in this clip, that's a clip about not using your cellphone in the theater. The bottom right corner, our PAC students are engaged in science activity, science experiments. As far as our Titan Elite Athletics, our volleyball season is in full swing. Our students have participated in several tournaments. We have one student who was named to the All Tournament Team in Salisbury, and another student who was named to the All Tournament Team as CE King. And so far, our students were three and O to beat West Orange Stark last week and three and O to beat Jasper on Tuesday. So our volleyball team is off to a good start. Our first home football game is tomorrow night, and the, I believe this is, the cheerleaders have themed it the Titan Hoedown, and the theme is boots on the ground. So you wear your cowboy attire to the game, it's suggested, it's not mandatory. And we also suggested red out, to wear your Titan red tomorrow. The dance team at Lincoln did a beautification progress, project where you can see that they have transformed their dressing room area. As far as community engagement is concerned, our parent and family engagement coordinator, Ms. Calco, organized and produced an event to engage fathers district-wide. And as you can tell, it was a very good turnout. Looks like they had to bring in extra chairs. A lot of the fathers were able to come out and get a lot of good information, and we hope to keep the momentum going. Hopefully, when there is the same type of event for mothers, there will be twice as many present. We had a event where we were helping parents to register students for school at the, in the practice gym. And a group called Everlasting Changes donated all those rolls of backpacks with school supplies in them for parents who came to register that day. And all of those backpacks were given out. Our new Lady Titans Basketball Head Coach, Head Basketball Coach was out in the community at another type of back-to-school giveaway at Lamar Port Arthur. And so that's the middle pitcher on the right. And then we have been receiving positive feedback from the community because our cheerleaders have posted their professional photos to social media. In the bottom left corner, we did inform the public that we are continuing with the free meals program for the school year, so all of our students will continue to receive free breakfast and lunch. We also shared a post from the city of Port Arthur. It's a resource where it tells you who to call today in Port Arthur. So whatever type of issues, whether it's utilities, whether it's the streets, the police, street flooding, plethora of different resources, we shared that so that our community can be aware of who they can call when they need help. And as a personal testimony, the water department, they did take care of the issue for me, so the numbers do work. Our, some of our football players and some other football players from neighboring districts volunteered their time to have a phone party at Bon V Nurse and Home. And this was a big hit with the residents, and it was, social media really loved to see the fact that the guys took the, the time out of their busy schedules to go and put smiles on the faces of those residents. Our cheerleaders helped to volunteer at the back-to-school event from, that was given by Linda's Lighthouse. And our Class of Twenty Twenty-Six Project graduation parents and students are already actively engaged in fundraising for that particular event. We have started posting scholarship opportunities and application deadlines. We have curriculum night open houses coming up at all of our campuses, and we have posted those dates and times and locations. And we've also sent those in all calls, emails and text messages. And we are also going to start, well, we have started, sending all calls, emails and text messages, depending on what the message is, to inform the community of things going on in the district that may not necessarily be a crisis or emergency. For example, tomorrow, we have scheduled a, a text message that's going to have the YouTube channel link to those Flames Band and Twirler videos that I was telling you about to kind of get the community in the mindset of the football game tomorrow night. And we sent, we're going to send out a text message in the morning about the progress reports being posted by five tomorrow. So today, we sent out a text message with the link to the Student of the Week's video, and it was viewed hundreds of times by the end of the day. So just so people know what we're doing and how we're putting it out to the community. Viola gave donations of school supplies to Travis Elementary, and I know for sure that the girl on the left is a product of Port Arthur ISD. Some more announcements from community engagements. Our Flames participated in a back-to-school event at HEB in the middle on the left. The Foster Grandparent Program, which is active in our district, is celebrating sixty years. We are partnering with T-Mobile to enter a sweepstakes. It's called the Five G Friday Night Lights Experience. And it's a social media campaign, and if we run up our social media presence in posting our fans in Titan gear with certain hashtags and certain tech, when you tag T-Mobile and you tag the high school, it puts us in a drawing to possibly win anywhere from five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars. And then the ultimate grand prize is a one-million-dollar prize to update stadium. The Girl Scouts have focused on elementary girls for the last couple of years. This year, they are extending an invitation to our six through twelve-grade girls to meet them at Milan's Bakery, which is not too far from the high school, from ten to twelve on Saturday, to introduce them to Girl Scouts and let them know the opportunities that they have available for our secondary girls. And this is our social media summary for the month and some of our alumni and staff accomplishments. Our Flames Director, who's also an alumni of Memorial, and the dance teacher, she attended professional development in New York, and she was able to meet Misty Copeland, who was the first African-American to be a featured dancer in the American Ballet. Kalen Hunt, who is Memorial alumni, is featured in Variety, which is the biggest trade magazine in Hollywood, New Leaders for Twenty Twenty-Five, and he is Vice President of Viola Davis's Production Company. One of our recent grads from Twenty Twenty-Five, Carmen Nixon, survived a horrific act of violence. And as a result, she is now entering Prairie View. She has made that move to Prairie View, starting her fall semester. She wants to be a nurse so that she can help people in similar situations from her. And she was, Channel Twelve did a follow-up story to show her going off to college. And then David Martin, who's also, he's a Thomas Jefferson alumni. He recently authored a children's book, and he has an upcoming event at Chick-fil-A. And he has also been a motivational speaker for several of our campuses. And that concludes my report.
Ma'am, please, Madam President, ask a question. Dr. Papillon, you or Ms. Jacobs, please say a little bit more about that backpack tags. I, I heard a snippet of it, not all of what you said, but that sounded like a great idea, I'd like to hear more.
Yes, sir, so I can expand upon that. The backpack tags will have, and I'm going to try to remember all of the points, but the student's name, their teacher, their grade and their bus route, some of the critical information that is needed to make sure that they are placed on the correct bus, right? And then on the, on the backside of that, we're also going to have an authorized person. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a parent, but it has to be a, a person that the parent authorizes to retrieve the child, and they'll have to present a photo ID, at least until the bus driver becomes, you know, best acquainted with that person. But, you know, coming from a pandemic and even just the idea that some of our students are five years old, six years old, they may not be comfortable or even just have the wherewithal to communicate like, hey, that's my bus stop, or, you know, looking at the number and realizing they may have been inadvertently placed on the wrong bus. And so to help alleviate those types of gaps, this is the solution.
Now, which grade levels, which grade levels would they?
This is for pre-kinder and kinder.
Okay, remember, to piggyback off of Mrs. Jacobs, we also are requiring every student to have an ID. And that is how they will be able to get on that bus. And then parents will be able to track their students where they are once they get on the bus. They will be able to get on their phones and track to see where the bus is and where their children, to see, make sure that kid, first of all, got on that bus and where they got off the bus.
Now, which grade levels?
That's district-wide, district-wide, every student.
If I may, that's why registration is critical.
Yes.
Because IDs, the IDs facilitate that entire process, knowing the child's whereabouts, as well as all of their critical personally identifiable, personally identifiable information being linked to that card.
You talk safety, that, that's, that's, that's outstanding, I'm just glad to hear that, thank you.
Yes.
I'd like to also add that with regard to those tags, we are, it's a systemic issue that we want to make sure we address, but systematism, we want it to be done across all campuses. And so what we also require is that every campus supports enforcement. Like all, if a student rides the bus, their tag is going to be yellow. So just by looking at it, you'll see if this child is a bus rider. If you're a car rider, you will have a balloon tag. And so just at the campus level, it's just kind of, just to try to help streamline it, streamline it. And if you're a day fare rider, okay, your bus, your tag, you drink. If you're a walker, it's going to be white. So just trying to also add some to the traffic, which are, um, do deal with.
Safety is number one. We know what academics is as well, it's a side by side. That concludes our staff report.
Okay, now that concludes our staff report. Thank you, Ms. Lot, for our amazing highlights that you do so graciously every meeting. We love seeing all of the different things that you do and what you do in, in general on our social media to put out to everyone, so we definitely appreciate that. Moving on to our minutes, considering if appropriate, approved minutes of July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, Board of Trustees' meeting, can I get a motion?
So move for approval, second.
Okay, it's being moved by trustee, Vice President Narcisse and trustee Getwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, their motion passes. We will now, on the next five items, we will actually vote on those individually. So I will read them and call for a motion on each one of those five items in reference to our budget. Considering if appropriate, adopt the proposed Twenty Twenty-Five, Twenty Twenty-Six budget, can I get a motion?
So move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's being moved by trustee Narcisse and second by trustee Getwood, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, considering if appropriate, approve the interest and sinking fund rate, tax rate of zero point four nine 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 one six per one hundred dollars of taxable value for the Twenty Twenty-Five appraisal role.
So move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Getwood and second by trustee Diane Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three, considering if appropriate, approve the maintenance and operations tax rate of zero point seven seven zero five zero zero per one hundred dollars of taxable value for the Twenty Twenty-Five appraisal role.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by trustee Diane. Okay, it's been moved by trustee Diane Brown and second by trustee Getwood. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, number four, considering if appropriate, approve the tax rate ordinance setting, the tax rate for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So move for approval, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Vice President Narcisse and second by trustee Getwood. All in favor? Any opposed? And lastly, number five, considering if appropriate, approve agreement for the purchase of attendance credits two thousand twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, we delegated contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code. T E C one one dot one five one one C four to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under T E C. Section four forty-eight dot two five seven, N T E C, Chapter forty-nine, subchapters A and D. And the rules adopted by the Commission of Education as unauthorized under T E C. Section forty-nine dot zero zero six, this includes approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit. Or the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit needing Chapter forty-eighth funding. Can I get a motion? Okay, it's been uh moved by trustee Diane Brown and second by trustee Narcisse. All in favor? Any opposed? Moving forward to our consent agenda, um, I will give you a a brief moment to read through numbers one through thirty.
Yeah, yeah, Bill, I will pull the nu- number twenty-nine.
Okay, correction, we will be pulling item line twenty-nine on the consent agenda. So I will be having you review numbers one through twenty-eight and number thirty for approval.
So move for approval.
Can I get a second? Okay, it's been moved by trustee Getwood and second by trustee Diane Brown to approve numbers one through twenty-eight and number thirty on the consent agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, there is no discussion on the item twenty-nine. We will now go on to discussions on amending uh the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six P A I S D student code of conduct. Do you have any comments on that?
I do have a comment. Um, and hopefully you all will follow me on this, but just after, of course, today's meeting, um, an idea came, came to my mind. Um, because obviously we we see that there's some, some work that we have to do, of course, as it relates to making sure our community is aware as to how processes work. And I think we can take this as an opportunity to work collaboratively, to collaborate with both board, admin, students and community. Um, by possibly discussing this item at a workshop and inviting, of course, those students, maybe the student council. And attend them to the Superintendent Advisory Board. Um, and working with those students is been brought to our attention that, of course, Dr. Murphy has already held a senior meeting um with the students. So they're already aware as to what they want to deem as um a distraction. So um as it relates to this policy, maybe just coming together um as a community and working collaboratively on this policy. And putting it on the agenda for a September meeting to approve, if you all would be obliged to that.
If, if I may, um, it probably would be better if we could to move that to October. Remember, the student code of conduct under the eight night legis- legislative session was changed. So we don't even have a copy of it yet. It still needs to come. And then the board will have an opportunity to look at it and make changes if they, well, within the law, of course. But we don't even, we don't even have the student code of conduct yet.
Well, I think that's fair. Just as long as we can, as long as we're all on board at taking that, that um, that approach. That would be, that would be my, um, I guess, motion to um discuss this. With the student body president and super- superintendent advisory board at a workshop to um further develop this policy.
Yeah, you don't need a motion for that. And at a workshop, at your workshops, people can actually come and speak at the mic.
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd be public so we can have their participation.
They don't have to sign up ahead of time for workshops.
Yes, I I spoke with a few people that, uh, parents, that's in the community, one has been Mr. Neal about. Uh, getting a parent advisory together on the secondary level and elementary level. To speak on not just um. The dress code, but just a code of conduct book that having them have some input also in it. Because it's their kids, you know, it's our kids, to be honest. So I think we, that'd be good if we could sometime in October. Uh, not gonna say a forum, but basically a workshop that we put out in the community. It's not a gripe session, it's a uh thing that we can actually have parents come to. To discuss stuff we can add or take away from the.
Let me, uh, and Mr. Lofton, please, and Ms. Carrier may be able to help me with this as well. I don't wanna, and I understand what you're saying and that's great, but we don't wanna give the parents the notion that they will be able to change the law. Yeah, the student code of conduct is the law. So we can't change the law, just like um the, the cellphone, you know, that is a law. We can't change that, but there are some things that we could talk about and look at, yeah. But we don't want parents to think they can come and change what is given to us.
I was gonna tell you. On the, yeah, we can't address questions from the audience, I'm sorry, sir. On the, on your student code of conduct, for the most part, that's gonna be chapter twenty, chapter thirty-seven of the Education Code. So there's not much in that, uh, that uh you're gonna have any kind of, you know, outside input on. But your dress code, yes, and that's a part of your student code of conduct. So and, and like I said, with workshops, then anyone can come and speak, you know, they don't get three minutes. But they do, you know, you don't have to sign up according to your policy and so forth.
I, I, I have a, a couple of comments. First, I was going to acknowledge trustee Getwood before he spoke, but. Uh, since he already spoke, I just said do it afterwards and then make a comment about the workshop. But somebody in this room is going to be playing Prince. In a movie called Seven. Eight, eight, eight notes, eight notes to heaven. And I, I think he knows who I'm talking about. Everybody may know, right? So congratulations on that part. That, I don't wanna sit here and act like nothing's going on this big a- amongst members of this board. That's, that's a big deal. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Now, that's one. Having said that, I uh wanna just acknowledge. I wanna be careful about the role the board plays and the role the principal plays and the role that the staff plays. And um, I think, you know, if the principal wants to call a meeting or co- have a conversation with students. You know, about an issue or has already had some conversations, I understand about this issue, which is, which, which brought rise of this comment, this, this, this meeting. Uh, uh, on the agenda. Yeah, I, I wanna, I wanna support the principal and staff having such meetings in accordance with their role. Uh, student advisory, whatever way that they meet with stu- she meets with students. That's one. Secondly, uh, if the superintendent wants to work with the board president or the board. And having a town hall meeting or something of that nature for general conversations about issues, let's give the superintendent an opportunity to set that up. But as Attorney Carrier just said, for the most part, the student code of conduct is gonna be pretty much consistent with what the, what the law. Is that we have to follow. So I just wanted to separate uh what our role is from what you originally suggested. Like a workshop and then talk about setting policy.
Yeah, well, and, and let me, let me kinda, cause I also put that out there without expounding more and that's, that's my apologies. I, I definitely understand that our role, we, we play different roles and, and that's to Dr. Porter's point as well. We don't want to empower people to think that they, that we can just change everything. I'm not gonna make this a them and us thing. Because we have to ultimately make the decision and we are still a community, we all, well, I'm not a parent yet, but, you know. I, I said that because we, we have to at some point create some foster of communication between board, parents, community. And that is one outlet that we can utilize, not saying that we're gonna be able to change it, but it gives us a chance to actually educate the community on the things that we can and can't do. Simple point, our students didn't even know that they had to sign up. And I know, and I, and I do also wanna take this, this moment too, to thank um President Wachoff Johnson. Um, because of course, this, this role is a very hard role. And, and living in Port Arthur, making decisions for Port Arthurians is very hard. And for you to, to, to stand your ground, but also make your point clear, I do wanna acknowledge that. But today should have showed us that we have a disconnect between us and the community and we have to at some point. Utilize the avenues that we can. I'll say this too and I'll be done. I got on this board at eighteen years old, not knowing anything about nothing. But all I knew was that I care about this district and I knew for a fact that we have other like mine to do care. And I knew for a fact that as an eighteen-year-old, the first eighteen-year-old to do it, hopefully more to come, that I would be able to add a perspective. Where did I get this, 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 this fire from? It didn't just happen when I went to TSU. No, it happened when I was in twelve grade. At a superintendent advisory meeting, meeting with my superintendent, talking about dress codes. That's where I was able to see these changes. And I take this seat personal because we have every opportunity to work with our students to teach them these things because they are the future. Just think about it, those are seniors who don't even understand how a basic civic process is supposed to work. So think about when they become parents and they do wanna be involved. You know, we have a community that's not involved, not because they don't want to, but it's because they don't understand. And we can't take for granted that, oh, because you're a parent, you should know this, or because you, you wanna, you wanna be involved, you should know that. We have to use every outlet that we can to collaborate. And I think that that is a way for us to say, hey, guys, we want your input, which we already have it because the principal has already done it. So it's not stepping over the principal, it's literally just inviting those students who she met with, per their representation from the, from their SGA president. Which is who the students elected to represent them, to come to the board and we say, hey, we, we are aware that you all have made some changes. We're gonna consult with um uh Madam Attorney to see exactly if these changes are possible and if they are, guess what? We want you to come to our next board meeting and we'll approve it. And that, that will foster a sense of collaboration for them to first understand how policies work. Secondly, see how to positively promote change and work in change. And then thirdly, get them civically involved to actually want to do better. Cause quite frankly, if we, if we survey our community, if any one of us was to leave this board. Who would we be competent to say can come and replace us? Most of us have been here for five years plus. I've been here five years going on six. And I know I'm not doing no longer than six. But who, who's gonna come and replace me? We have students who are valued, who have valued input, who don't understand these processes. And this is our opportunity to work with them, to teach them these things, so that way we can say, when you walk across that stage, you can be a trustee. You can, you can go out in the world and be great. You don't have to just go off to work. You can be right here in your community and actually make, make positive change. And not have to, to come in and make the mistakes that I made at eighteen years old, but come in prepared. Why? Because you had an opportunity where you was, when you were in school to actually affect some positive change that's lasting. So that's the only reason why I offered the workshop, because I was aware, and thank you, Madam Attorney, for, for clarifying that as well. I was aware that it is a public setting that people can come to, that they don't have to. And we know for a fact that it's not a secret, we've never had anyone show up to our workshops. Just like we've never had anyone come and speak to the board, since I've been here for five years with the exception of one person. So this is our chance to foster that, that community and that collaboration. If we want their, if we want their help. We have to is- issue out our hand and go beyond our seats on the Thursday, every fourth Thursday. That's just where I was coming from with that.
Okay, thank you for the information. I'll go ahead and sum it up with the final comment on that. We have all spoken and we do understand the direction that we need to go in. I appreciate everybody's comment. Um, from Mr. Getwood to Dr. Brown, Mr. Lofton, and even our speakers that we have. And I do not want anyone to think that it's falling on deaf ears. We hear it and we know the direction that we need to go in to try to make it better and get that information out. So we'll discuss that going forward along with other ideas that we've discussed amongst the board as in, as in ways to engage the community. We'll continue to work on that as we work on other things. So we definitely appreciate that. We'll go ahead and move on to personnel.
Yes, Madam President, board members, I've given you the list of teachers for consideration.
So move for approval.
Okay, it's been moved up by trustee Getwood and second by trustee Narcisse. Uh, for our personnel, all appro- all in favor, I'm sorry? Any opposed? Okay, can I get a motion for adjournment?
So move for approval.
Uh, board members, if you would be seated, Ms. Boyce has uh, uh, papers for you to sign, so please do not leave.